Okay, so those that don't know, my name is Rosemary Listermore. I'm the President and we're talking to you on the news for Canada. And I've called this meeting tonight because I feel that we need to find a little bit more information of what was being proposed for our area. We have kept it very simple. If you have a look at the agenda, I'm sorry there isn't an agenda, we will try to get some more. I've divided the meeting into two sections. The first half will be the presentation for Mr. Carston Larson, who's the Manager of Action. And the second half, we were open for answers and questions from the floor. I know that some people said they wanted to come and give a talk. I don't think we're going to have time for that. We've got a limited time factor here. We have to be late at 9:30. So if you are going to do a presentation, please be brief. The meeting will close right on time at 9:30. There is supposed to be a representative from planning here, Mr. Jeff Reed, who's present only to answer questions on the planning process. I'm sorry, there is not enough chairs, but we work the people that take lots of invitations to lots of people, so I'm sorry. I would now call on Mr. Carston Larson to give a presentation.
Ladies and gentlemen, I do apologize already now, of course I'm not very good with the microphones, I tend to forget to talk into them, so if I do, please put up your hand and yell at me and say you can't hear me. The other thing I'm going to apologize before we start is we've got a lot of slides with a lot of words on it, so I think people off the back are going to find it a little bit hard to read it. So if you can find a spot further out, that would probably be better. We just tried to cover as many of the aspects of this project as we possibly could, so we probably don't do a bit over in terms of our words. There's a couple of people here with me today. We have got Rukamani, who is one of my managers at ActuAGL, and he's here to help me, because when there's questions that's too hard for me to answer, he will help me out. And we also got Tony Anderson. He's a town planner from the CBI Realty who has worked with us to make this happen in terms of putting all the documentation together. So if there's any questions, I can answer them and also refer to him. What I want to do is, I first want to go through the why. You know, a lot of people are asking, "Why am I doing this?" You know, "Why is ActuAGL doing that?" And I am the responsible person within ActuAGL. This project falls in my portfolio and I'm the one that takes the plan forward. Then we're going to go through some of the project backgrounds, you know, a little bit more in terms of the depth of why we did a project overview. We're going to look at the benefits some of it. We're just going to have to see, okay, you know, what's the benefits for the ACT? Can it be? Then we're going to go through the key issues in terms of what have we heard from the community? What issues do you have out there with this particular project? And we're going to go through them individually and just see whether... You're probably not going to address all the issues, you're not going to answer all your questions tonight, but at least you'll get a feeling of that we know that you have got issues with the project. And we can then go through the formal process in terms of getting those answered as part of the planning process. And then I'll just do a wrap-up, a fair piece, and then some questions from you. Okay, this is why. You know, it's flat. The substation up in Belconnen that supplies electricity to Canberra is our own supply point. If that goes down, then we will be without power. Okay? There is no other supply point. We do not have any other generator capable of running the hospitals in town, running the telephone systems, running street lamps and so forth. That is the reason to why we got into this. If you have a look at Auckland in 1998, there was a line failure in one of their cables into Auckland, and they were out of power up to five weeks. Can you imagine that in a cold winter's night in Canberra? No lights, phones will go out after two or three hours as the battery runs out in exchanges, and your heater won't be working. The gas heater will be, but your electricity heater won't. That's what could happen here. So what we have been doing, as the government's been doing and ActuAGL's been doing for many, many years, I've been with ActuAGL now for nine years, been looking at what can we do to change that situation. The other reason to why we got into this is that 72% of the carbon emissions that Canberra or ACT is responsible comes from stationary energy. That's the stuff that we buy from Loy Yang and from Macquarie Energy in Sessno and so forth. 72% comes from our heaters, from our lights, from our air conditioners and everything else. If you have a look at Australia, it's a little bit different. It's lower, it's down to 50% because they've got agriculture and they've got a lot of transport and so forth. But in Canberra, our contribution to greenhouse gases is 72%. That's the product that ActuAGL delivers to the public in Canberra. And you know, being a responsible company, we would like to do something different than that. Okay? Land degradation is another one, where, you know, we're talking about location here. Location is a big problem for a lot of people. But if you live up in Newca... up in Sessno, up north in Newcastle, you can see how big Newcastle is. It's a fairly big city. But if you actually had a look at the mines of a Newcastle, they're bigger than Newcastle itself. And we just keep on digging more and more and more. And as long as we keep on using coal-fired generation, those holes will get bigger and bigger and bigger. You know, at some stage we need to stop that kind of stuff. So that was another reason to why we thought this would be a good idea. So, background, why did we do it? To get electricity supply to Canberra in case the power feed goes down and hot. That substation is rated in the top 30 terrorist targets in Australia because of this particular issue. I think it's something that we need to... Do I have to tell you? Don't try and... hey, but if you live in Belconnen, you're right, you'd be frightened by that kind of thing. No, hey, there's a little bit of difference here. This is a bag of supply. This is not a single supply point. Okay? Successive... so, you know, as I said, the government's been trying to figure out what to do about it. And as I said, we've been studying for 15 years. About five years ago, we were very close to building a power station very close to where this particular location is. But you know, what we have found is that we can never get the numbers to work. Gas-fired generation is substantially more expensive than coal-fired generation. It's about twice the cost of producing a megawatt power from a gas-fired power station that is produced out of a coal-fired power station. So we've never been able to make the numbers work. Of course, at the end of the day, if you're going to put up a gas-fired power station, we don't actually want to go and increase the electricity prices in Canberra. But we also, you know, need to make sure that, you know, if you're going to build this kind of infrastructure, spend all the money, that it will actually also grow the economy in Canberra. So what we did was, we went out and we, as a commercial development team, sat around the table and said, "Okay, how can we make this work?" And we looked at the best priorities we had out here. It had to be economically viable so we didn't have to increase electricity prices. It had to provide essential power supply to Canberra, you know, that's the reasons of why we got into it in the first place. It had to be a better environmental solution than buying coal-fired generation. And finally, we will see whether we could actually grow the economies, you know, put more money into the state so we could pay the roads and so forth. So the proposed solution was a gas-fired power station. And what we found as an enabler was data centers. So data centers was the second thought to the why. Okay? The data center can make it happen, because what we're doing is, we're putting the data centers on the same site, which means that we take the distribution and transmission grid out of the equation. So we can... the distribution and transmission costs are almost the same cost as your electricity price. Okay? You buy electricity and you buy... you buy a haulage to get that electricity to deliver to your house. That's almost it quickly. Of course, we have got the data centers on site, we can sell it at the same price as it was to deliver from a coal-fired power station. That's why this makes it economically viable. We've been trying to do it within this sustainability framework, okay? What's important in the world? People, society is important. You know, environment's become very important lately in terms of planet. And of course, we also have to make a profit. It has to be financially viable before someone arrives, it's going to impact us all. And we're trying to live within this kind of framework. And as you can see, location is one of those things that we are taking into consideration. So we have thought about whether this is the right place or the wrong place. And, you know, I'm sure that some of you would think we've come up with the wrong conclusion, but it certainly is one of those things that we went through the process. But we also looked at all other things, about in terms of what's going to cost to run, where can we put it, is it possible to put in all this other stuff. We looked at the environmental things, we looked at the economic things, and we looked at the social things. I just put this slide in because I think it's important for us to understand why gas is better than coal, because I'm standing up here saying this is environmentally friendly, but you always say, "Hey, it's all a carbon product, it all produces emissions and so forth, why is it better?" In terms of if you could buy electricity from a round coal-fired power station, it sits up here, we produce about 1.3 tonnes of carbon dioxide for every megawatt hour that is produced. If you buy it from Hazelwood, you're producing about 1.5 tonnes of carbon dioxide for every megawatt you use. The average for coal-fired generation in Australia is about 1 tonne of carbon dioxide for every megawatt. And you can then move your way down. And what we're trying to do is, we're actually trying to do what is called gas coal generation. And we are sitting at around 300 to 400 kilograms of carbon dioxide for every megawatt produced. So there's a significant difference between the two, to the extent that... What is it, about 40%? Yeah, you know, we can talk about... Okay. Can I just talk... It's been listening to our conversations about renewable energy, you know? Yeah, can I just say this? I actually do a lot of work on renewable energy too, and I've had seen presentations like this in front of people who didn't want to have a renewable energy farm in their backyard, like a wind farm and so forth. So, you know, but that's the material to what we're trying to talk about today. So, anyway, looking at this, this is one of the reasons why we chose gas. Renewable will be there one day, it's not today. So let's just go back to the data centers. Why is this a good idea? What's happened in data centers that suddenly make me think that I can sell 22,000 square metres of data center? And you've always seen the buildings and the drawings and so forth. Why has this market certainly appeared? And what's happened is that we have, you know, there's been quite a big evolution in computers the last 10 years, and that evolution is still going on. Computers are using more and more power than they ever had before. They're also getting denser and denser, which means they're getting heavier and heavier. And at this particular time, there's a window of opportunity for us to build these data centers, because a lot of data center operators are looking for new data centers, because the existing data centers can't cope with electricity use and can't cope with the weight losing the data center. So that's one of the reasons to why we are finding that there's a market out there. So we've gone from where it used to take 25 cabinets to run one processor, to about 2010, we're probably putting 25 processors into one cabinet. And if you've all got a laptop at home, and you feel the heat underneath that laptop or something else, you actually feel them getting very hot. What we're doing is we're putting a lot of those laptops in one of those cabinets, which means we're creating quite a lot of heat inside the data centers while they're using a lot of electricity, while they're getting very heavy. So there's a shift into new data centers. The fence is moving for new data centers. Quite a number of other government departments are looking for new data centers, but also people OCs are looking for new data centers. And Canberra is quite an attractive option for them. In terms of a data center, where does the power go? It actually goes mainly to chillers. Okay? So it goes up there, 33% of the electricity is used in the chillers. That's the cold water to the air conditioners to cool down the buildings. The other thing is in what we call computer room air conditioners and humidifiers and so forth. The actual equipment inside a data center is only used by 30%. The great news about the gas-fired generator, why these two projects really work together is that we can produce chilled water from the generator as a by-product. So we take the exhaust gas, just like your fridge at home that takes hot air and make your fridge cool inside, we also take the hot air from the exhaust gas and we produce chilled water for the data centers. And we are cutting out this whole environmental load up here by using a by-product rather than actually having to use electricity to generate that cold water. So environmentally, it is a very good idea. The other thing about computer room air conditioners is that we can use what's called free air conditioning. In Canberra, we have quite a cold temperature, and during winter, we don't actually have to use electricity, we can actually just pump the cold air into the data centers and cool them down, which is a benefit and yet again another environmental benefit for data centers. So let's just talk about the old paradigm, the new paradigm of data centers. I know that some of you might not find this interesting, but if you need, you know, if you've got concerns about the project... But you know, if you want to understand...
We don't want to know. It probably is a lovely theme, but not getting a horse cage.
That's right.
Look mate, the problem is that it's really not about the data center, it's not about the power station, it's about where it's located. Your report doesn't show how far you have to go away from the source. Now, now, listen mate, we're a focus, so just listen. Your report doesn't show how far you have to go away from the source of the noise to actually get down to the approved level of 35 dB at night time. So I suggest that you give engineers to go and do a proper report, provide it to the community, and work out how far you have to be away from the suburbs in order to meet that requirement. That's already set in Australian standards. We're not against the data center, we're not against the power source, we're against just blasting a proper report, an engineer report, and a scientific study to locate it in the right location.
As you... transparency, honestly, I've been speaking about this for a year to a lot of people. I had my first call about the issues of our courses in November last year, so it's not like you know...
Will the gentleman at the back, please, be quiet and... About location, I ask you to talk about location, but for goodness sake, show your manners and not interrupt when somebody's...
No.
Have you suffered the likely actuarial damage to people? The likely effect on people's life spans caused by, one, the noise, and, two, the pollution. Have you caused the cost of lawsuits for any single likely respiratory disease in this past town?
Let me put it like this...
No, you never do, because I've worked in that...
No, I'm trying to answer your question. Do you want me... or is it just a statement you made? Do you want me to...
I am furious.
I can see that you're furious, and I'm sorry that you're furious, because we certainly never intend for you to be furious.
Put it in your backyard right off for a couple of years and then we'll go for it, all right?
Yeah, I do need to make one statement. I used to live in Fethin. I live in Fethin. I live in Fethin, so it is in my backyard. Okay, so I'm going to eat, you know, whatever I produce, I'm going to eat myself. I live in Fethin. Okay, can... Sorry, sorry, we just got a few questions going on at the same time. Okay, I can't even remember the first one. Can I get back to this one, because I can remember this one? Data centers, there was a report in 2007 by the Environmental Protection Agency in America to the Congress, they recommended this approach as being the way forward for the US government for their data centers. So, power station, piloted... So, let's go back to previous, because I know that some people said that I mentioned it, but in previous slide, if I was going to build 22,000 square metres of data centers being a data center space under the new power loads, I would have to have 22 1-megawatt diesel generators in your backyard. Okay? Oh, sorry, 100. 100 1-megawatt diesel generators in your backyard. Of course, power... This is my backyard too, you know, but I see all the cameras in my backyard. Okay, okay, here we go, here we go. Here's the drawing, you've all seen it, you've all seen it, okay? Let me explain, these are the data centers, okay? The data centers are blackout data centers, there will not be office buildings. The way the land is, we cannot build office buildings in this land, which is fine by OSB. You're not interested in office building, this is about data centers. There will be offices for operational staff, but there will not be a major, you know, block of office buildings. And that's one of the reasons to why we can't build office space there, and we hopefully can build enough space there. 400 car parks for a couple of reasons, in case there is a disaster and people have to get to the data centers to do... Tony, you've probably got more scientific into why that's going on than I do.
With 22,000 square meters of data center space, there will be some employees there. Each of the buildings will require some employees.
How many employees?
Not many. It's not 50 and it's not 5, it's something between that. And it depends on how it's configured. Well, I'll take that on notice. Essentially, I trust that everybody here is aware of and has had a look at or will have a look at the Planning Authority website, which has the development application on it. And in the documentation, there is a noise study done by technical noise experts, us. And there is also a plume study, which looks at the whatever is emitted from the power station. Those two pieces of work are there, and they're technical pieces of work, and I can't answer questions on them, because I'm neither a noise engineer... Nor am I an air quality engineer. If you have any technical queries on those, and we would welcome, you're referring them to any technical expert you want. My experience in Canberra is that in a crowd like this, there is usually some fairly well qualified people who can have a closer look at documents like that, and we'd be happy to answer any technical questions. If there's things that need to be looked at again, we're happy to. Obviously, we've got paid for the people that did the work. The land that we're on is zoned for development of this nature. One of the questions was how it's zoned...
Look at the spatial plan that Aklar has. It says future employment, not industrial. That's on the Aklar site. Get it right.
It's zoned Broadacre.
It's not. Look at your site.
Well, the land is zoned Broadacre. If I had a computer, I'd call up the territory plan.
You're on.
And Broadacre, the Broadacre zoning permits this sort of activity. It's as similar as zoning to the, some of those other large institutional type things, the Exo build... We're not rezoning it industrial. Well, in that case, that's an error, because we're not... Thank you, Rosemary. It is zoned in Broadacre. Oh, sorry, I can explain that. The land is zoned... The land is... well, we can't do anything, it's the ACT government that will do it once they have a plan. If you'll bear with me for a moment, the land is zoned Broadacre. There have been two studies undertaken by the ACT government, the Planning Authority and the Land Development Agency in the last five years. One was called the Southern Broadacre Study, and the more recent one was called the Human Industrial Land Study. Both of those studies actually proposed that this land be rezoned industrial. We don't propose that, those studies proposed that. That means that if we weren't doing anything here in the fullness of time, I would expect that the Planning Authority would follow through and actually rezonate industrial and do industrial type things. The land that was selected for this facility was selected by the ACT government, by the Land Development Agency, and it was assigned to Actu.
Which other areas have been assessed to have data center...
Why don't you put it in an industrial area then? Not in a residential bloody area.
Because it's not residential, it's Broadacre. Yes, yes, if you look at the definition of Broadacre, major utility infrastructure is part of the definition of Broadacre, yes. No, no, that's not... that's Broadacre, it's a information... But there is allowable... there's allowable use of Broadacre. So what we've done is, we've put the power stations down the block...
Tony raised the issue of noise, mate.
Because... It is a flight path, and you're right about that, and I was about to get to that. Because of the people that we are... because of the people that we are planning to put in this data center facility, being underneath the flight path is probably not a good thing. Okay, it's not a good thing. It's not a good thing, okay? Initially, the data center funds are coming from a company called Technical Real Estate. It's a company that is... it is... it's an Australian company that has got funds from Singapore. I'm sorry, I do not understand, why is that an issue? It's a commercial event.
Listen, if you don't want to listen to the presentation, then maybe we should close the meeting. We asked these people to come tonight to try and explain to you what was going on inside. They are trying to do it, but people keep interrupting, especially the man at the back there, they keep wanting to take the floor. Okay, okay. If you don't want to listen, then I suggest you go home.
Okay, let me just... can we talk about the generator? That's the one that is pretty annoying, P G. Okay? There's two parts to the generator, okay? There's a base load facility which will run 24/7, okay? 24/7, it's going to run up to about 110 megawatts, okay? That is when it's completely built in about three to four years' time. It won't be that way from day one, it probably won't actually be that way for maybe six or seven years, but I can't promise that, so I would be playing safe in saying three to four years. to four years. In, in the first couple, in, in the first couple of years, it will be two twenty, fourteen megawatt turbines, so it will be a fairly small power plant in, in the first couple of years. There's a, and, and that will grow as the data center electricity demand grows, and the maximum it could go to is a hundred and ten megawatts, okay? No, there's a hundred and ten in the base load, there's just a hundred and ten in base load. There is another part of the data center, of, of the generator, which is what we call a peaking power plant, okay? Peaking power plant will only run to about one to two percent of the year, about hundred and seventy to hundred and eighty hours, depending on power prices. That is a way that a company like AGL, Maxor AGL protects itself against, um, price fluctuation in the wholesale market. So if the price becomes really expensive, we still sell to you at seventy dollars per megawatt hour, but we might have to buy at, at three to four thousand dollars per megawatt hour. So you can see there's a fairly big loss to, to a company like Maxor AGL. What we do is we then turn on the peaking power station that offsets that loss to us, so we actually make that money. What that peaking power station gives us is, is that essential power supply so we can run hospitals, we can run streetlights for...
Hospitals have their own generators.
They're not going to work for five weeks.
That's correct.
And they're not big enough to run hospitals, they're, they can run essential services within a hospital for a short time.
But you're already running the hospitals now. Why do you need to do this?
Because this was where we started after the black screen. That's, that, that was the why. No, it's not hypothetical, I, I was grabbing to read it about six or seven years ago, when the power was out in northern Italy for about two days. Couldn't get any petrol. When I, I forgot to turn on my light and I drove into a tunnel and I almost hit the walls of the tunnel, because I thought the light would just be on in the tunnel, but when I got in there it was pitch black. Started in a foreign car, where was the light? I, I, I think we, we had North America, the whole, uh, the whole eastern seaboard offline electricity for a number of days. This is not, this is not hypothetical, this can happen. And if, if we didn't start planning for it and it suddenly happened, then you would also blame us for not having planned for it, so we just need to get this right.
Anyone else want one of these in their backyard?
So, so, so what, so what do we, what do we talk, what do we talk about in terms of...
Four hundred car passes for if there's a disaster. So, can you tell me how many lives could be potentially lost or fatal or injured from those homes that are six hundred meters away from the facility? If you're talking about a major disaster, and you just mentioned before, can you tell me, have you factored that into your analysis?
I'm sorry, I, I, I don't get the question. So, so what are you, what are you thinking of the data center that got blown up by terrorists? Is what you're thinking about. But you don't have to go far, there's data centers, some of our most secure data centers are sitting in June, so, you know, if you're worried about terrorists blowing up data centers, you don't have to go far.
Power station, they're common, that's the terrorist risk. So why would you talk to this power station if it's a terrorist...
Yeah, it's like terrorism, very good.
Because...
You were the one that brought up terrorists, and actually you said they're putting the terrorist card on it, and that's...
Yeah, don't put it in.
No, actually, I don't think I have, you know...
Well, this is irrelevant, I just get to the, the main...
Can I, can I, there's a, there's a couple of things about a gas-fired power station, is one of the things is we don't want to store gas inside.
Everything comes back to the same question, people ask you to avoid it.
Which, which...
Wide, wide location, adjacent to a residential.
And you let the ill and the sardonic presentation forget to the spotlight place.
Yeah, but all the...
Okay, can we, can we just have a look? This, this is what we all get so angry about, this, this generator here. This is a generator in, in South Australia. This is a generator in South Australia, okay? So this is, this is what it will look like, okay? This produces less electricity than some of the units we're going to put in place, but we're under the same environmental restrictions and noise restrictions as this generator, and it's about the same size. The reason to why we, we chose this one, because we actually went down and had a look at it to make sure the noise was not an issue, okay? So that's, that's one of the reasons to why we've been off these people.
Is this the tight one there?
This is at, this is, this is at the Cooper's Brewery in, in South Australia. It's a solar, solar turbine, so the same turbines is what we will be using. Can I just, can I just, can I just show you where this solar turbine is sitting, okay? This is the power station, that's the Cooper's Brewery, and this is residential area.
How many turbines is that?
Pardon? There's only one turbine. Okay, but I'm under exactly the same noise restrictions and exactly the same emission restrictions as that turbine.
Can I read from the, can I just read from the... Is it, is it the Titan one thirty, please? But look, mate, your own reports say that the worst...
I've actually got, I've actually got the information on this particular generator, so this is the thing that has proved to, I think, all our parliamentary presence. Now, you just said we're having a two-hundred-and-ten-megawatts gas power station, six-hundred meters away. This one, four-point-four megawatts. We just read from this.
Second page out.
How much, how much noise protection did they stick around on the outside of that generator and protection we actually exhaust that? And how much will you be sticking on outside of it? Four-point-four megawatts, not comparing a motor to a V8.
That is not true.
Four-point-four megawatts, five, about four R, two of ten. Designed, constructed by, usually the major equipment is stored inside of an acoustic enclosure, Cooper's Brewery is like that, first round, the noise attenuation was expected to be much better with standard industrial vibe, which is technically a set. A soundproof enclosure was built around the turbine, and silencers installed both exhaust stacks and the turbine's air in like ducts. Are you doing those things, those generators in our facility?
Yep, and what we, what we also do, if, if it's, you know...
Four-point-four megawatts.
If, if it's, if it's an issue still, you know, we'll, we'll build walls and we'll put roofs on it.
How long was that, how long was that...
That, that is, that is actually, that is actually not true. We do have, we do have, we do have money in the budget to do that. But can, but can, but can, but can I, but can I just say, in, in terms of, in terms of, in terms of, in terms of the EPA, in terms of the guidelines from the government...
Will you sit down, please?
Shut up! ...to your thermal energy, pollution-free, ten-thousand-megawatts, trying to come off speed, and all your problems solved.
Yeah, that was, I think I had one, I think I had another ten minutes ago.
I think Carson's got the sense that there's a lot of angst in the room. We keep interrupting, we're not going to get anywhere, and come here and play. Why don't we just give him ten minutes of silence, and then I'm happy to facilitate him around with the microphone, and we will answer all the questions there, but let him tell his story, if he's, if he's having the courage to come down here and face us tonight. How about we give him ten minutes, and then I'll facilitate him.
Hey, that's, that's, hey, yeah. I live and breathe this every day, so hopefully I understand it. And what I'm, what I'm trying to do is to try and get, you know, the reasons across why we have done this. Let's just have a look at the key, key issues that we have heard so far, okay? This is what we have heard in the community. Okay, the ACTL notification process to residents, immunity consultation, site selection, noise impact to residents, greenhouse emissions and pollutions, environment, and heritage impact, and the horse yards, they're, they're the ones we have heard, so I hope we've covered them all, okay? So these, these are, okay? What you need to do, what, what you need to do is you need to send them to, who is, who is it we sent them to, Tony? Planning Authority? And let us know what else, what we're missing out on, because we're missing out on any kind of issue concerns. So this is the site, okay? This is the site. It's right opposite the T.
Hasn't been done yet.
And right across the...
There's you, there's streets up here?
Yes.
Okay, so, there'll, there'll be more slides, but we can talk about it, there'll be more slides. The ACTL process, we actually submitted, we submitted on the twenty-sixth of February, our submission, okay? There was a process, slow, go slow mode within ACTLA, which meant that it got delayed by month. It had absolutely nothing to do with ACTL, that was ACTLA, okay? Um, on the eleventh of April, we announced that the DA had finally been submitted, because they wouldn't allow us to submit it before then. So it was not, you know, some people are suggesting that we were trying to get it into the school holidays, that's certainly not what we were trying to achieve, okay? That is totally out of our hands, we do not make any decisions about when things go to notification or not. Um, in terms of consultations, we also let all MLAs know that this project was coming, and I did presentations to, I think, six or seven of the MLAs, all the ones that wanted to listen. We did a presentation to the cabinet about this particular project, so we have kept you elected people informed about this particular project. They are meant to represent, they are meant to represent you as, as, as a person, okay?
I have said, I have said shareholder in your company.
They are fifty percent shareholder in, in my company, that's absolutely correct, okay?
Kind of vested in the government.
I, I, I'm, I'm not here to defend the government, but I, I think they have the same concerns about electricity supplies, what we do.
But why are ideas...
Yeah, but they don't live next to this contract, do they?
Okay. There is, there is, uh, the normal process within these kind of applications is there is a process for you to bring your issues to ACTLA, that finishes in the fifth of May. I know the minister is considering whether to extend that, it's not something I can extend, it's something that ACTLA has to extend, okay? So that concern must be addressed to ACTLA. I can certainly say to the minister, we believe there's still a lot of outstanding issues, maybe we ought to extend the process, and I'll have a chat with the minister.
You advise on that?
I can do that.
Are you going to advise on that?
I can do that.
Is that a yes or a no?
Yes, we will, we will have a chat too later.
Let me know, James.
You can know this.
Carson has a question down here.
Yep.
When Button Avenue had speed bump put in, the whole of Baden, Witten, Metzger, everybody got a veto before ACTLA was allowed to put speed bumps in. And I believe that Actuangelo and ACTLA managed not to tell the people that I've been in the area of a key to live on, when those managed to give us a newsletter telling us about little speed bumps.
Hey, hey. Sorry, you know, can, can I, you know, no, there is no cover up, we are, we are following the process, there is, you know, and we are following the process to detail, and we have been in the press many times over the last twelve months talking about this project, there is nothing new about this. I can only tell you that, you know, I have certainly spoken about, I've read a number of press meetings, I've been quoted in the press about this particular issue, so... Yeah, and also generator, okay?
One of two-hundred-and-ten-megawatts power stations.
So, I was advertised in the school holiday period.
You know, I, I, you know, I can also...
Just a few more minutes on, run through this, and then we can give the question...
So that's the process, we are following the ACTL process, okay? If the process does not suit your needs, you must take that up with ACTLA, okay? What we can do is, we can say, hey, there's obviously concerns, but people need more time, ACTLA, can you change the date? That is not something we can do, okay? Immunity consultation, as I said, we offer MLAs, we're doing this today, we have had a website operational for, I think, eight months now, where people have been able to go and have a look at this. Um, I will offer for us to set up our tent down beside, next Saturday, if there's interest. There's genuine interest in what we're trying to achieve, but we can put up the ACTL tent down there, people can come down inside and have a look and feel for what it is we're trying to achieve.
Will you get any noise?
I can't, no, sorry, I can't create the noise at the time, but, but, you know, if you keep, keep it standing aside, and you can get a feeling for what does it look like from that point, rather than from the backyard.
Your noise consultant couldn't do nothing properly, so, you know...
Carson, just look at, I think it is a good idea, perhaps I'll give them a number that's fun to be there when they're actually got one person watching the site. If people will actually go and see, so that if people drive down like the main bank goes, is there a development route there? So go to where people are, and actually communicate through the...
Okay.
Let them finish.
We, we will, we will take you, we will, we will, I can't promise that we're going to do that, but I will certainly take that recommendation on board, okay? So there we are. Site selection, this is the big one, okay? The site that we are looking at at the moment is on Macker Lane, opposite the T, okay? We will offer another, another couple of sites. One of them was, was plot prone, which is not a good idea for a generator, and another one was full of Aboriginal artifacts that would have taken years to clean up, okay?
What about the Aboriginal artifacts that have been out? Where were they?
There are Aboriginal artifacts, and we have had another expert out here and looked at Aboriginal artifacts, and, and they claim that they're manageable, and that we can get them stored in appropriate places, and we can fence off the area where Aboriginal artifacts are.
Where were the two others?
Very close to Hume too, so next to the, bit further down the recycling center, and so on the creek. Tony, did you, did you know the fish week, Tony? New South Wales, you know, this is an ACT project, a New South Wales project.
And you're very close to the border, and appropriate location is not where the residents have to find off, uh, car racing, drag racing, this thing moving there, and have to find off so many different things, and now power stations, you know, because I know, I spoke to you, and you're not pro the power that was put in, uh, originally on Actuado. People in our area, a certain part of the government, looking for excuse to make our homes in that place. And don't care if they're... If the government said, all right, they're all, they're all nuisance down there, let's leave them alone, you have a choice to make this go somewhere else. We're not anti-power station, you know that. What we are is pro-expected, away from the homes that have been there for over three to five years.
So, from an ACTL viewpoint, with the options that we were offered by the ACT government, this is the most appropriate site for us to use, so... Sorry, for the, for the land that we were offered by the government, this is the most appropriate site for us to use, that's the only thing. Because of those reasons there, because one was plot prone, the other one had a huge amount of Aboriginal artifacts, and probably will turn, be turned into this. This is the land that we were offered by the government, the government said have a look at these sites, we had a look at these sites, and this is the one... This is a government that you elected that will approve your application, yes. These, these people are your representatives. No, that's what we, oh, sorry, that's a, that's a very, that's a very, that's a very serious question here, okay? No, 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 I said this is the, this is the land that the government has given us to cook this on, that doesn't mean it has been approved. There's nothing been approved, this is, this whole process is about approval.
All right, can I ask you, just, just because I'm...
I hope I asked you a question.
Sorry, sorry. Please ask some question. Sorry, I just need to understand the process you're going through.
That doesn't...
All right, can everyone hear me? All right, all I want to know is once this process has been through the submission period, what happens the next step after submissions? Do you have to then reply to our submissions? Give answers to things we raise in submissions? And then we have to go through another approval process? Do we have a reconsideration? I just want to know the process that's going to happen.
Tony is the better person to answer this question, I mean. The better person on the process issues would have been the Planning Authority, but I know the process. The submission period will close, the Planning Authority considers all of the submissions, um, thinks about them, um, actually, I'll, I'll take a step back, there's two processes happening here, there's a preliminary environmental assessment, and there's a development application we're running in parallel. Um, they both contain very similar information, but you'll find them both advertised on the ACTLA website. Um, the new legislation actually, which came into force a little while ago, streamlines that, and, and we wouldn't need to, uh, do the process anymore. But there's two, two processes underway, the Planning Authority determines the environmental assessment, if it passes the environmental assessment, they're then able to go on and determine the development application. Both of those, and both those decisions are required to take into account all of the comments and submissions they've received, and I assume they'll receive quite a few.
Um, they make up their mind, they make a decision. Once the decision is made, there's potential for people to appeal, lodge an appeal against their decision and that can then be reconsidered or can be considered.
And what's the timing that we're looking at?
Uh, at the moment, I think, um, public submissions close on the fifth of May. Yes, they're in, they're in.
Two submissions on the Acta website?
Yes.
We have to respond to two submissions?
Yes, we'd like the two, uh, two processes, the same submission, they will accept one submission as being on both processes.
But that automatically shifts them both?
Yeah, they, they cross-check them. Um, forgive me, I'm talking to the planning authority, but, um, uh, this is all, I think, fairly true. Um, these are procedures. Um, uh, the timeframe is that their statutory timeframe for considering a development application, when it includes, uh, um, a preliminary assessment is ninety working days. And they're likely to take that long from when it was lodged, and it was officially lodged about, um, it would be about five weeks ago now. I forget the exact date. And ninety working days divided by five. So there's some, some months to go, but, uh, um, the, officially the submission's closed on the fifth of May, which is next Monday, I think. Um, they're likely to extend that, I suspect. Um, and, and even if you put in a submission after they officially close, they're still actually obliged to consider it. Um, and they would do anyway, as a matter of course. Well, my trend is they still consider the submissions, but, well, we can definitely. Um, as I say, they're likely to extend it, I think. Uh, when they, when they make their decision, they issue a notice of decision and in the notice of decision, uh, they respond to all of the issues raised, they provide their explanation.
How, how is that issue of, how is that notified? Is that just another thing in the paper of somewhere, a public notice?
If you are, uh, put in a submission, they give you a notice, they send you a notice of the decision.
We all get a form letter to save us the carolica. No submissions read and answered individually, it's just one form letter for everyone.
Okay, so we come back to this, this land issue. So we were given a, you know, choice of a number of plots of land and we've ended up in this piece of land. And when we had all the experts out looking at the piece of land, we met all the criteria that are set down by all governments, including the federal and ACT government. So therefore, this is the reason to why the site was chosen.
Excuse me, Carsten.
Yeah?
If you were given the choice of putting it anywhere in Canberra and you weren't restricted by the government, where would you put it?
You know what? If I put it in Belconnen, I would have a similar meeting up there. If I put it in, in Fishwick, I would have a similar meeting there.
Put it up there in the bedside day.
So, you know, I, I've been, you know, we talked about renewable energy, as I said, I, I've been in similar meetings for renewable energy generation where people has different kind of issues, so. The unfortunate thing is that we try, sometimes we win, sometimes we lose to get things up. But, um, you know, if you look at it, this is, this is, this is the cards I was dealt. And the cards I was dealt actually turned up from, from a development viewpoint to be all right. I didn't have a flora issue, I didn't have a heritage issue. According to the experts, that, yes, we did employ it because that's the way the process worked. So, yes, they are my payroll. I'm, I'm, I'm afraid that the Acta guidelines doesn't call for a human issue at this particular time, so. Noise, noise, which is, I suppose, by the human element comes in, now that I've put my, my, put my own mouth here, but, let me try and get the shoe on. And, uh, you know, here's, here's this noise stories, okay? Can I just say, six hundred metres is from the back boundary of the data centres, that's the end of the site. The generators are more than, are close to a kilometre away from any house, okay? So we just need to get that straight, the actual noise generator is a kilometre away from any house.
How tall are they?
Yes, the site, the site boundary is away, is six hundred metres. The reason to why it's got high chimneys on it, and if you're seeing the output of a gas turbine, you can't actually see. So it's not like a plume we used to have down in Hume. I used to walk, I'm a kind of queen, queen walk, and I walk up in the hills up behind to where I live. And you can always see the plume, uh, the, the plume from the, the sawmill. This thing is clear, this thing is clear as sea. And they're thirty-six metres tall? And the reason to why they need to, and the reason to why they need to be so tall is because of the buildings. It has to be tall, it had, the chimneys has to be taller than the building. Yes, shall I say it again? Thirty-six metres tall. That's correct.
And how many are they?
It depends on how many turbines get put in. Initially, there will be two. Uh, if the peaking power station gets changed into one turbine rather than the current three, which there's potential to do, then there will be four. And as, as the turbines get put in the data centres over the next three to four to seven years, there might be another three or four.
I, I don't think this is fair to the sake of the car.
I'm still staying within the nine that you see on the map. Okay, I'm still staying within the, within the nine.
Do you know the Rod Gooden Power Station?
Rod Gooden Power Station, no, I haven't.
All right, Rod Gooden Power Station was built at Alice Springs about twenty years ago. Um, it was refurbished about five years ago with gas turbine generators. Now, these generators generated that much noise that a group like this stood up and said, hey, we've had enough. Take your power station and shove it. So what they did is they relocated the power station and it costed fifty-seven million dollars to the taxpayer. Twenty-five kilometres away from Alice Springs. Twenty-five kilometres away. It costed three million dollars to relocate the gas line, only three million dollars. Now, I figure on a billion dollar project, three million dollars is what it costs. I mean, to move this power station away. And I think that this is a big snow job. And I'm sorry that you've got to be the mouthpiece for a corporate organisation that want to make money out of this community.
Um, I guess I do represent the corporate organisation. You don't, you don't have to feel sorry for me, of course, I don't actually believe this is money-making into satisfactory agil. This is about central power supply.
They have only two hundred megawatts to run their data centre. That is just a crock, total crock.
We need about a hundred and ten at full power in about ten years' time, that's correct.
Yeah, but you're talking about.
I don't need two, I don't need two hundred and ten.
Talking about other data centres too, aren't you?
The, the other data centres is at Belconnen, they will not be fed up with this particular generator.
So is there only gonna be two?
There's only gonna be two data centres and the data centre in northern, uh, Canberra, if they ever get created, will be, will be a traditional, will be a traditional data centre with diesel backup generators.
I read your report here, um, I don't think you should. As I walked in this evening, it said that this will be a world first data centre. That's bullshit. It's not world first. Galley Ag Connect is a British company who are building these data centres all around the world, through Europe, uh, Asia, and now in Australia. I have a, a press release from September oh seven stating that the power, that the, um, the data centre here in Canberra, I quote from IT Pro's site, um, in England. It said that, uh, another data centre in Canberra, Australia, has also been confirmed. And this was in September two thousand and seven. So please explain, did I use that term? Please explain, please be transparent and tell us the truth. This thing's been going on for the last five years to, since two thousand and three. Um, Galley Ag Connect has been doing interim studies on the probability of, um, this project. And these guys have just been fluffing.
Have they been sneaky behind my back? You know, they, they shouldn't be, because I can tell you what, I don't, uh, when did we go to tender to figure out who was gonna partner us in this project? I think that was in July last year? May, June, okay, that was, we actually went up to the market to talk to people about who was gonna be the data centre providers to. Okay, that was May, June last year.
And you'd be doing the same as those other people around the world that do.
Uh, can I just say that what they mean in terms of world class is there is no other data centre in the world at this particular time that's running as environmentally friendly as these data centres will be running. Okay, so, there is no, they, they. One, one, one thing, you know, data centres use a lot of power, let's, let's face it. What we're trying to do is to reduce the impact of those data centres on our community. You know, you might not see it, but we're pumping a lot of carbon dioxide out into the atmosphere in qualified power stations, that you might not know, but it does affect us here. It does affect us here. And why do you think you're not getting any rain?
So, um, meantime, so I'd even mention security supply. But in, in the same turn of phrase, you're talking about a data centre. What the security of supply to Canberra has to do with a data centre?
See, this is where, this is why I did all that talking upfront, because I was trying to put the two, I was trying to put the two together.
Let me finish. According to a press release issued by the chief whip's that John Stanhope in May two thousand and seven, your security of supply problem has already been resolved. He said, instead it was decided to build an additional electricity access point into the ACT through Williamstown to secure supply.
That is another way of doing it. Can I just say, you know, there is, there is nowhere in any other country in the world where you do not have a, a generation point close to your major defence installations like what we have here. Where a central government is reliant on thousands of kilometres of, of power lines to secure it. That just doesn't happen, okay?
If the whole power thing is so important to Canberra, then, I should ask the, um, representatives here, so Brendan. This is so important to Canberra, we need this much electricity, can't do without it. Well, there's only three sites available we can put it in, three sites. And the best one is six hundred metres from residential land. What happens to the next major infrastructure project in Canberra then? If this is the best they can come up with for this infrastructure project, where's the next infrastructure project going, okay? A lot will be taken up when this power plant expands to support the next lot of data centres and everything else that comes along. So where will it go? But it's a serious question and I ask, um, Brendan, I ask, you know, I think this is something you need to take to, um, Parliament. What the hell is going on with ACT planning if we can only find an area to stick a two hundred and ten megawatt turbine generator power plant, six hundred metres from residential property? What is going on with ACT planning? This is a Canberra problem, an absolute Canberra problem. And yet, we hear nothing about this, you know, oh, we've got huge electricity problems. Suddenly, we have huge electricity problems. This stuff should be debated in the community all the time. Community, how do we resolve our strategic problems? Not, by the way, community, you have a strategic problem, we resolved it by sticking a great big two hundred and ten megawatt power station in your backyard. Thanks, and it's all been approved and no doubt you've already ordered the gas turbine generators. Which, according to their study, will be, I think, um, started construction mid-year, so, anyway. That's getting a bit sneaky, but we had a serious Canberra-based problem. Brendan, can you please take that forward to Parliament? We would like this debate, thank you.
Obviously, there's a lot of trust from Brendan, and, but I think Brendan would do this when I say that I don't lie and I don't tell the truth. So please don't even suggest it, I think Brendan has known me for a long time. And I'm not gonna stand up here and try and pull your leg because if one day it's just gonna come back and bite me in the arse, okay? No, no turbines has been bought, no turbines has been ordered. Yes, of course, we have had to talk to the turbine manufacturers to get specifications so we can do the studies, but there's no orders.
Your noise is growing.
Yeah, you know, sorry, I, you know, when my integrity is up, you know, I do gotta live the looks here. Okay, this is a, this is a noise study, you know, you're not gonna be able to read that down from the back. And, uh, you can see the reason to why I have not put any colours in these, these are when you are standing next to an aircraft turbine and so forth and you're gonna get, go deaf. Where we are operating in terms of the generators, we are operating when you stand next to it, right there. When you're about a half metre away from there, when you get about a metre away from you down here. What our expert tells us, okay, I can only rely on experts, people that's gone to university for a very long time and studied this. That's all I can do, okay?
There's a question, someone wants to ask a question.
Yep, but can I just finish this slide before we get on to the question, okay? Thank you. What they have evaluated on the, the worst weather conditions is that you will be up in Macarthur between twenty and ten decibels at night, okay? Depends on what side of the reach you are on, that is lower than your ambient noise.
I think your party doesn't say that, but it says the worst condition will be seven dB above the environmental standard.
I think it was seven below, wasn't it thirty-five and twenty-seven?
Why don't you read the report?
Important, if you don't read it, you'll probably find that, okay?
Seven dB.
So here we are.
Five times the power level.
So here we are, okay, so this is your worst condition. And as you can see, there's a kilometre between the generator, which is one of those causing problems here, and residential area, okay? There is a health facility here, which we have talked to the community, uh, to the, to the departments that own that health facility and we are talking, it's right here. There's that, there's that blue, okay? That, if, 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 if you, if you read the, the noise report, you'll find that, no, we do not need the, the legislation for that particular facility and we are dealing with it, all about building walls and so forth. This is, this is as if we didn't put any protection in whatsoever. This is if we don't put any protection, noise protection around the facility at all, okay? This is actually an interesting one, this is how we'll be operating for the first many years. And you can see just those two buildings, they only put two buildings in sight and you can see how they're actually shielding the noise, those two buildings. So if you can imagine, if I put a wall around the generator site, it will shield it even more.
And what about when it bounces off the inversion, where it gets down, goes over the wall, undiminished? Are you gonna put a solid roof on it as well?
If that's what it takes, I can do that.
Um, that's the result.
Yep. Okay, um, Tony, you were the one that hired him, we have, can't tell you that.
Okay, well, let's see another point from theirs, and they said they could not actually validate the bottom. And that basically means this is their best guess. They take in the bottom, they take some parameters, they do numbers up and down, so they get a noise green chart on it. Now, wouldn't it be a due diligence activity on your behalf to say, thank you, Vass, you've done the best you can, and the results are going to be dubious, the consent can't validate it. Maybe we should go through one or two others and get some other opinion and see what they say. Maybe we should do some physical simulated sound testing. Let's take a sound generator down there at three o'clock in the morning, let it run, generate some noise and go up to Macarthur, go activate the mesh noise. Wouldn't be that expensive, it would be a duty diligence for such a massive food business or a project. I mean, the, the risk of, you know, someone trying to sue you later, you know, opposed to spending actually a couple of thousand dollars and getting better results or more qualified results, rather than getting the local Canberra company to do a noise assessment on a particular structure they probably had a gun in. It's just not due diligence. And it's inappropriate in submitting this as if it's a real answer.
So, so, yeah.
Invalidate in a, what the law, they don't give that a.
It, it is, uh, what you're asking me to do is if you're gonna do an extension at home and you had an architect doing the extension and you had the engineer coming up the drawings. But you just wanna make a hundred per cent sure, so you went out and paid three times more to get two other people studying engineering drawings and so forth. I, I suppose, you know, I'm, I'm trying to live within a, within a process. And the process, and, 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 and the process, and, and I have met the process and I'm trying to follow the process, you know, to the, to the nth degree. And, and I can tell you what, the process does not call for me to stand here tonight, but I'm here.
I'd like to make a couple of points, we, we've had a lot of references to websites tonight. There's a website which is called the Active Corporation Statement of Corporate Interest, two thousand and five slash two oh six to two thousand and eight. 2005/2006 to 2008/09, under main, under undertakings and scope of activities. Quote, "Actu is a territory-owned corporation whose primary functions are to provide energy, water, and wastewater services to the ACT through its 50% participation in the Actu AGL joint venture, etc., etc." Now, um, there's also a reference here to Actu having a 24.9% interest in Transact, valued at zero, no dividends are projected, profit potential of Transact will be realised later than expected and after write-downs of $53.9 million. How do we know we're not going down the, the Transact path on this? And the other, oh yeah, this is a classic. "Actu accepts that the services itself must be sustainable. To achieve the, this objective, Actu carries out education programmes for consumers to reduce demand."
That's true.
That's crazy!
That's what we do.
Are you going to, how are you going to, you're going to reduce demand on this also?
We're actually doing that because if I was going to build a normal data center with all of their chiller systems and everything in it, then they would use significantly more electricity than what we are using under this scenario. You know, one of the benefits, and one of the benefits that I talked about earlier on was that we can actually use the exhaust gas from the generators to produce chilled water for the data centers, and thereby reduce the amount of electricity the data centers uses. This is a very sustainable thing to do. You know, data centers can't run on a solar plant, they're only charged during the day, it actually has to have, have ongoing power supply.
Well, I'm glad you got that covered, because under the water restrictions, you won't be able to use water for cooling.
Yeah, yeah. I'm under the public water restrictions. Can I just say that this particular project is not taking water out of the Canberra cap, so we're actually buying water in for this particular project. So, so it's not going to have any impact, it's not going to be any impact on your water restrictions in Canberra. It's coming from the Tantangara Dam.
Very quickly, the success of this relies on gas power. Didn't we have some problems last year and the year before with gas supply? I mean, are you putting out the pipeline in or something?
Thanks for bringing this up, this is actually one of the side benefits that we're getting out of this particular project. Of course, this project pays for us to upgrade the gas mains into here, so we don't run into the gas supply problems that we have had over the last couple of years. So this is a side benefit out of the project.
You know what?
What else do you want to say? In terms of Transact, you want to talk about the financial, you know, we have been studying this for 15 years, and we have never been able to get the finances to work, okay? So we are very conscious about the financial success of this particular plant. What we have done is we have outsourced most of the risk, which also means that other people take a share of it. That's where, you know, it's the backbone of TIE comes in. But then there, we have outsourced a lot of those problems to other people, to end up with the end goal of having a generator in town.
We're checking with this one.
Hey, you know, yeah.
We're checking on, I think that is, but for our, we don't want to, we ask you, that it means you always keep a mind, and recognize that there are many more that are like, we want you to find some of them.
But, but my problem is, if I put it somewhere else, even if I put it under the flood park, I would have all of Yarabamba up north. And, you know, exactly the same, exactly the same reasons. And they, and they, and they got the prison, they got the prison, you know, maybe we have to share the number of lives.
Just let me run through this last bit, then we'll go to questions.
Okay, noise, you know, Ross drew that one, uh, it is. Emissions and pollution impact. Okay, we live in a world where the government set guidelines in terms of what we can emit into the atmosphere, and how, and those guidelines has been made by this particular project, okay? This, this gas is exactly the same gas as what you use at home in your, in your home. You know, we're not changing the gas, we're not adding anything to the gas. This is what, when you turn on your gas fire at home and you look at the nice flames inside your own house, this is exactly the same gas we are burning in this turbine, okay? There is, it's not kerosene, it's, you know, this is the gas that runs into your own homes and heating your water and heating your houses. We are meeting the guidelines set by both local and federal government in terms of emission control out of this turbine, okay? If we're not happy with the standards as a community and we want them to be lower, then that's what we need to do, we need to go and change the standards, okay? But I am, you know, I have, the project is within those standards and those guidelines, and they're very tough.
They should specify that you meet the standards of 10 years, but you're 45 micrograms per kilometer.
That's correct.
The EPA maximum is 2146. Under the assumption of your, your study, you meet it by a quarter of 1%, and that is only if you look at the output of the turbine. It doesn't look at the effect of the, of the steam turbines, which might correlate the risk and reduce this.
So because we're chilling water, we are changing the...
It is the steam in there.
Steam in there, but I'm, sorry, you know, you are really getting me into, you know, territory that, you know, obviously you know more about than I do, and I'll be awaiting your submission, I'll be awaiting your submission as part of the process, but, you know, the expert...
The report, you only are a quarter of a percent under the maximum of...
I, I am within the limits, and that's...
There's a quarter of a percent.
Think it's the latest, think it's the belief that statistically you cannot be above the limit. It's just impossible, with all the variability that goes into those calculations for those environmental issues. Just impossible. You've got to take it out.
You know, like, like you, when you want to do something and you go to an expert and you, you know, you go to a doctor when you feel sick and the doctor tells you something, and most of the times, we tend, they tend to get it right.
And they go through a process, they go through a consolidation for a...
Your supplier does not fault in gas, fault in gas is a poor street picture.
It won't be, because...
If you get your fracture and if you're bothered, fault in, with your sarcasm, you can't argue with it. The only experience that you get is that the source of it's there. You don't have legal plants, um, a facility, you don't have a legal plant...
A facility to clean what gas goes into your power plant or the exhaust that comes out. There is no C2 collection, a securstation, and there is nothing to scrub the nutrients directly. So if you hit bad supply, send your whole projections of this study being under the limit of what is allowable and going out of the window.
We, we will be tested, probably on databases, you know, in terms of the exhaust agreements coming out of that power station.
What will your testing be when the kangaroos die on the hills?
No, the testing will be on a daily basis, and if we exceed what we have said, the power station will have to be turned off.
Get me to another side.
Sorry, that's, 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 that's the rules. That's the rules. So, so if I exceed the allowable limits, then I have to find very quickly a way of getting within the limits.
Put your money into the heart of the geothermal energy. Australia has less enormous sources of geothermal energy. Do you know this?
Geothermal.
Predator is buying into it, the main is how it's going to handle geothermal energy. Why are you not doing the same?
We are, we are looking into geothermal, we've been looking into wind farming. As you know, they'll be together with the government, they're after solar farm, solar farm study at the moment, uh, me and...
In people's backyards, you might be looking...
Because, you know, geothermal, when we get the water out of the ground, first of all, we're farming, you know, so, this is detailed, this is totally relevant to this conversation, but if you want to have a geothermal conversation, we can have it somewhere else.
Carson, we've got a question now, we might get a question, people, people are interested.
Okay, look, I'm fairly basic and I don't want a geothermal discussion. I want to know if you're so confident you meet all the guidelines, that your zoning is perfect, why has it always been advertised as Hume, not Macarthur, and why?
I, I have to take the blame for that, because, no, 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 honestly, hey, I'm, I'm giving you an honest answer here, I have to take the blame for it because within the team, we always talked about Hume. It's only about a week and a bit ago that I understood it was actually in the district of Tocronon. But if I'd gone out with the name District of Tocronon, how many in this room would have known where that was?
No, we live in Tocronon.
And why, why was it advertised for consultation in school holiday period when most people were...
I actually had a slide in there, went through that, you know, a little bit of detail, saying that it, you know, it was totally out of our control, we do not control, that's the NACPA, you know, if the man from NACPA had been here, he would explain that to you, I can't explain that to you. I would have loved the notice to go out in the 26th of February, to be quite honest.
Okay, Carson, Brendan's going to get into this chat in a moment, so, I still, since the Commonwealth is likely to be the biggest beneficiary of most of this power and et cetera on the data center, they would have done a far better study than what I've just heard from you tonight. What I'd like to see is actually a more detailed engineering report to show the dB fall-off right down to at least 35 dB, because your own report says, at the worst case, it's going to go 7 dB above the recommended 35 at night time. That's a times five power increase than what it should be. So, do a proper study. I'm one of the neighbours who's closest to this facility, and you didn't meet them, you put the noise log in our street, I believe, I didn't hear from anybody to say we're going to be doing this, until I saw the signs, the cardboard cut out at the end of the street saying there's going to be a meeting here tonight, so...
That's right.
I think the, the 7 dB over is at the ACT health, health facility, which is the 600 metres from the...
I don't think so.
The sound...
I don't think so, they said the closest location is being affected, and we're pretty close to the closest.
So, and I'm pretty sure that the report specifies that it's the ACT health facility.
Is it before or after the rezoning to be done?
There's no rezoning, it's Broadacre.
That's BS, because it says it'll be rezoned in the, in the DA.
Anyway, look, that's not the point I'm trying to make, Carson. What I'm asking for is a proper engineered report which goes down below the recommended limit at night time, so you can actually work out how far from any residential area this facility should be put, notwithstanding all the other caveats that you have about Aboriginal artifacts or some other reason why you can't place it. Get all the criteria met, look at the Australian standards, they're only a legal requirement if you call them up under a contract and do the job properly. The Commonwealth would be embarrassed to write a report out like I've seen that you've done for this.
What we're really wrong was that that sound study was unvalidated, so it makes it unvalid, will you guys...
You'll probably find it in most...
And they pay good money for it.
Yeah, my, my question goes to the stuff that was on the website under the Osploom version six. Under year one, you have 114-megawatt generator operating, putting out a calculated ground level concentration of 107 micrograms per cubic metre. By year five, when everything's operating, you're only up to 240-far micrograms per cubic centimetre, which is under the EPA, but the numbers don't stack up.
Brooke, any comment?
You've got nine, nine generators online, um...
Through the act of a process, the form of an ACT will be reviewing all those study reports, and, um...
Okay.
If further studies are required, um, we will, or alternatively, permitting won't be given, um, so we will have an opportunity to, again, review those reports, and if further expert studies are required, permitting won't occur without that, without that happening, so...
Okay, well...
So I urge you to, to take that up with NACPA.
They should also take into account the fact that you're using a meteorological station based at Canberra and a airport 12 kilometres away from the site. There is one here in Tocronon, four kilometres away from the site. Why hasn't that been used? And that is available on the bottom side.
Look, we can certainly take it on board, um, we're not the experts here tonight, and...
On the, on the wind thing, I can tell you, of course, I'm into wind farming too. And the, the airport, the airport wind monitors are always the reference sites in, in major areas, you know?
Any navigation?
There's four or five questions to ask, but I'm assuming that our objections regarding to ACT, have you guys in ACTU, anyone of you tonight, just writing to the community I'm in?
There's three, three gentlemen sitting over there, busy writing down notes.
Thank you, just a question, um, on the chimneys that you have on your site. You've said earlier that you needed the chimneys there to disperse the, the plume that you have out. Notice that you've said that between 35 and 36 metres high. Have you noticed that that is roughly the same height of the streets in Macarthur, above the site that you're going to put there? So in fact, you're going to deliver the plume directly at ground level where the people are living. That, that's probably something you should look at, it's a slight mistake, I think, um, which means that you would then have to, perhaps if you want, if you want to deliver the plume above the residential areas, it actually probably had to double the size of your, sorry, the size of your chimneys, to about 70, perhaps even more metres.
That's not true.
Of course it is, actually, look at the light of your chimneys and the contours. Actually, have a look at the contour maps.
It's all about dispersion of the plume, I'm not arguing the height, I don't know where these 36 metres are.
Based on the airport meteorological studies, which on the weather rose shows that to the southwest, there's hardly any wind at any time of the year. It represents 4% of the total wind activity in the area, and I think that's BS. You've got totally different mean structure, topographically totally different. So to mention...
Thank you, Vassal. I'm just trying to say, I'm just trying to get very...
What, what kind of meteorological study, or weather, wind study, plume study, at Macarthur?
Um, sorry, you know, we, you know, it's a bit of a stupid answer, but, you know, we followed the process, and the process, you know, but what else can I say, for goodness sake? This is, you know, this is what we have been required to do, okay? This is what, this is what we have been required to do.
Thank you. And you mentioned that the data center is the enabler for the power station.
That's correct.
But I believe that it's the emerging economies of India and China that are providing data centers in the future. How do you know you're going to have a market, the data centers? And doesn't that make the whole idea stupid?
So, so you're using this in the carbon descent, and these kind of people should move our data centers to India?
The, that's emerging economies, they're different economies.
Anyway, you know, that, that's, I don't think that's, I don't think that's relevant to what we're trying to achieve.
Come back.
Okay. The wildlife, in fact, we've already had a few questions about this one, but yet again, obviously, we found another set of, you know, people that were, that couldn't answer the questions, but we have found that, you know, there is limited impact on, on environment in the area.
I have one quite simple question. Irrespective of the maximum dB levels emitted by the power station, will we hear it?
Irrespective of the dB levels, yes, I live in Fadden, and sometimes I can hear the airport.
We will hear it.
Okay, some, some...
24 hours a day.
Sometimes I can hear the airport.
That's remarkable.
Okay, yeah, so...
That'd be the biggest southwest requirement.
But, so are you asking me that every day of the, you know, there's not going to be some sort of, you know, condition where you're not going to hear? No, I can't give you that.
Well, according to your own report, it says during night periods, it expected that noise from the site will be sufficiently above the background level for the order. Every night.
Are we talking, are we talking where on that site? Is that at the health facility, which is 600 metres away, or is it the kilometre away?
Well, you don't know, you don't have many people down the hill there, they're all in Macarthur.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, at the end of the day...
The sun goes down.
You know...
At the end of the day, the sun goes down, but the power station keeps operating, and that's the problem.
The power station will keep operating, that's correct.
I would just like to ask a different question, more politically focused. Australia's recently signed the Kyoto Agreement. Now, you're going to be pumping CO2s in the atmosphere, it's, and NO2, it is a lot less than coal-generated plants, I certainly agree to that, but it will still be a surplus. Have you had any consultation at all with the federal government on this? And this is a question I'd like to ask to Brendan, stay forward.
I can tell you, Kevin Ross' policy on this particular thing is that it's going to be more and more generation onto gas generation, and that's the stated policy of the Royal Government, so...
But that's not answering the question, and is he also stating that it has to be so close to residential areas?
Um, you know, it, you know, a gas fire...
Canberra is the capital of Australia.
Where's the proview to building, you know, it's, um...
Canberra is the capital of Australia.
Yeah, so what's the issue there? You know, this is next to the tip.
Is it?
Last, last, last time I looked at it, the tip was across the road, and I don't think Macarthur... Macarthur is next to the tip. That's a kilometre away.
That's not a criteria to put a power station. But, to answer my question, has there been any consultation with the federal government?
Yes, I had, I had consultations, quite a lot of consultations with the previous government that was very supportive of this particular project.
The previous government is no longer in power now.
But I've had consultations with the local government, you know, I've made a presentation to the cabinet, I've made presentations to opposition people, I've made presentations to MLAs that is not in the, in the labour, in a caucus, and so, you know, I've tried to address as many people as, as we could. I was going to have a meeting with Senator Conroy this afternoon, but he was knocked out in the cabinet until past four o'clock, so I couldn't talk to him.
Can you say that you've had these presentations, when you've just admitted previously that you've only known where the location is a week and a half ago?
I, I'm, I'm, sorry, you know, I don't know where you got that one from, a week and a half, we have known this location since about November last year, when... So, you know, if anyone got the feeling that I said we only know the location a week and a half ago, that's just not possible, it takes a long time to do these studies.
Thank you all for, for bearing with me, I think I have an important issue to raise, and all due respect to everyone here, and including Carsten, who has answered these questions, but I guess we are just trying to get to the bottom of the facts so that we can all make informed decisions. Now, you have spoken a lot about you were just following the guidelines. Now, there are probably a few people in here who have been in a position to manage two billion dollar projects, and I've been one of them.
Yep.
Okay? Now, it's not just about following the guidelines, you have to adapt the guidelines to be commensurate with the size and the risk of your project. How many two billion dollar infrastructure projects have there been conducted in Canberra? Anyone? How many two billion dollar projects have there been conducted in Aunt Canberra?
Nine.
One? Okay. How well-equipped is the ACTA planning process to deal with a two billion dollar Class 1 EPA facility? It's not. Where is the due diligence from your organisation? Where is the due diligence from the government? What is going on? We are not prepared to be dealing with these things, and yet we seem to have a bunch of decisions in place already. This thing requires a whole lot more thought. Such a strategically important project, you're just following the guidelines. Where's your risk management? What is the greatest risk to this project? What if it doesn't go ahead? From what you just said, this project...